Okay, so at six thirty-five, I'm gonna call the Tuesday, December third, two thousand and twenty-four Pembroke School Committee meeting in order. Would you all stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Did anybody wanna speak? Okay. Well, welcome, everybody. Glad to see a couple faces in the crowd. And we do have an adjustment to the agenda. It is on the, any agendas that are circulating, it's number eight, C, consideration for approval, MIAA, middle-level waiver for girls' basketball. That is the only adjustment that I'm aware of to the agenda. So we did have some communications. Both Erin and I were asked by the town manager and the chairman of the board of selectmen to meet with them to do a general overview of the town budget and kinda go through the timeline that the town has, where the town feels as though they are. I believe you have materials in your packet that were presented that evening by the town manager. You know, not a lot different than what we've been talking about, right? So what I really pulled out of that is it's gonna be a tough budget year in fiscal twenty-six and fiscal twenty-seven is looking actually a little dimmer. From some of the materials that were presented, Commonwealth hasn't met some of its receipt goals. There's some concern about what state aid may look like, the fact that new growth has really been stalled, likely due to the interest rate environment, the inflationary environment, the labor environment, is really meaning that that's not adding to the revenue stream for the town like one would expect. So some work to do. Erin and I did share sort of where we were, that we really hadn't done a lot from a budget perspective, that that would start in earnest over the next several weeks. Our budget subcommittee is meeting next week to begin some planning. But it was, I thought, a really good exchange, a very collaborative exchange over about an hour and twenty minutes. And, you know, we may do that another one or two times during the cycle. We'll have to kind of wait and see how things progress. But Erin, anything that you wanted to add?
No, I think just keeping the communication open, things change quickly. It seems slow at the start and then rapidly it starts to pick up after the change of the calendar year. So I'm just continuing to communicate our assumptions with Phil and the select board as they do the same with us.
So we will have, before everything gets finalized, I will ask Chairman Marino for a joint meeting like we had last year. I thought that was very productive, you know, that we are about fifty percent of the town budget. So bringing the boards together to have a collaborative dialogue on where things ended up and why they ended up there. And that will be likely in the April timeframe. So it just adds up to everyone. Any questions that you guys have that you wanna ask?
So we're just gonna only have like one budget, one joint meeting?
Yeah, I'm not, so I'm not anticipating what happened last year, right? Where there were like lots of regularly scheduled meetings. I think these will be more like check-ins to make sure everyone stays on the same page and stays aligned. But I don't anticipate what we had last year at all.
Okay, all right. And are we gonna do, like the, when we present the final budget number, I know it's really premature. Are we gonna do like a joint with advisory and the select board again, like we did last year?
Yeah, so that, I'm sorry, I forgot advisory. That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay, all right.
Cause I thought that was, that was far more productive, right? Having all of us come together. And I think, I also think it's good for people in town to see their government working through this.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
The one request I'd have is that we meet first with the budget before that meeting. So we can ask questions before it goes to the full town. Thank you.
Quick question. If, for the public, what documents would be the most helpful to look at or places to look for updated information?
So we start a tab on our website that will say FY twenty-six budget, and as soon as we present anything, it'll go right into the tab.
Awesome, thank you.
Other questions? Awesome. So Erin, I will turn it over. Oh, we are, there are bills that are circulating. I know some of you guys were kinda going old school and hand signing some of those before the meeting. So thank you for doing that. And Erin, I will turn it over to you for your report.
First, under my report, we have our elementary content supervisor, Melinda, is here. So you all remember that we shifted our structure a little bit at the end of last school year to combine our secondary, our content supervisor for science and our content supervisor for math positions to make a STEM, bringing up an opportunity to create an elementary content supervisor. So Melinda is here to share with you kind of what her work has looked like so far, what she's excited about, and kind of where she sees that work going over the course of the next few months.
Great, you just took my first slide. All of the above. So yes, thank you for the opportunity. I am excited to share with you the work that I've been working on since July and different opportunities that have been created. A little bit of background, if you don't know, I've been in Pembroke since two thousand and six. And I spent many of those years in grade five, my last few in grade three. And I think that since two thousand and six, if there was ever any summer work or curriculum work, I've been on it. I've had the chance to work with some amazing coordinators who have since retired and administration. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to continue the work that, sorry, that they have started. So my core responsibilities, I kind of like to label that as my favorite opportunities. And it's given me a chance to work hand-in-hand with building administrators and teachers. I attend their common planning meetings, which are a full day of meetings, meeting with every grade level. And I have the opportunity to be at all three buildings and kind of cycle through those meetings, delivering the same message. I facilitate PLCs, which are personal learning communities. I lead two of those. And then just the opportunity to kind of walk around the building and share our glows. We have so many excellent educators and being able to catch glimpses and then bring it to our larger learning community has been amazing. And I will share some of those experiences with you. My day-to-day, I try to work my schedule around those common planning meetings at the elementary level. So Mondays, they typically happen at Habermock, Tuesdays at Bryanville, and then Wednesdays at North. And that allows me on Thursdays and Fridays to kind of rotate and be with teachers who are piloting our writing program or trying out a new science program. They're inviting me in to listen to their scientist circles in grade six with open sight. So being able to just kind of target myself to teachers in different areas, different grade levels in the three buildings. I had three different areas that I wanted to focus on. Our first one being our district math benchmarks, really making them data-driven, leading to great conversation. I'll be able to show you what that data looks like in just a minute and the transformation that had happened, especially grades three through six with a new platform that we have access to. My second one being writing with data that we have access to, knowing that writing is an area we could improve on. That was something that was important to me, not only writing, but also just all learners. What does this look like for our ELL population? What does this look like for students with social emotional plans or academic plans? You know, can we meet the needs of all students? What do we have? What are we lacking? What do we need? And then how do we support teachers? Teachers right now are piloting a program called Simplify Writing, and they're in the midst of it. I'm getting the opportunity to go into classrooms, look at lessons, get feedback, and have that conversations in all three buildings, which is really important to me. And then lastly, our science curriculum. This is year two where teachers don't have a physical book, students don't have a physical book. So just making sure teachers know the work that has been done in the past with our science coordinator and knowing where our curriculum map is, what do we have, what do we need, what's working, what's not working. And then also just making sure that we're growing our fifth and sixth graders. So when they transition to the middle school, that we're setting them up for success.
So Melissa, do you mind if we ask, or Melinda, sorry, do you mind if we ask a couple questions as you go along?
Sure.
So does anyone have any questions so far?
Yeah, thank you so much. Just a quick question on how you prioritize, how do you decide where to? I know you said on Thursday and Fridays it's need-based. So how do you usually choose, like what might be an area that somebody asks for support in?
You know, with our, especially with our writing, hey, I'm, you know, starting narrative writing. I'm gonna be working on it for the next fifteen days. Can you, you know, do you wanna see a lesson? Yes. Or, you know, math, or give, math, I was able to go into a lot of the classrooms because that three-through-six level, we transitioned our benchmarks to an online platform that teachers were not, we'd never used it before. So being able to go into grades three through six, kind of just going, building, building classroom to classroom. And also the students didn't know this program. So being able to model what it looks like, do a practice assessment, a silly assessment, so they're comfortable with the program. So just kind of, here is where we're going, here are the things I would love to see, here are things that you might need along the way.
Got it. So like personal goal-setting, kind of around whatever that initiative is.
One more thing to just point out is that Melinda is finishing up her training in terms of observation and evaluation. And she will be an amazing resource for our buildings, principals and assistant principals to help ease that load because that is a very labor-intensive practice.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
That's great.
Any other questions?
Other questions?
No, I'm good.
So I do have one question, and I'm about to date myself, so forgive me. Like she said, there was no book, and I'm like, okay, kinda get it. But for science, then you talked about the materials correlating to the curriculum standards and, you know, kind of being able to pick up where things left off and what have you. Help me understand that a little bit, right? Cause with no book, what materials are being used? And to your point, how are we ensuring that the kids are getting what they really need to understand and learn the material?
Sure. So in the past, the work that has been done, I've been part of that work. We developed curriculum maps, and those live in our drives that our teachers have access to. And, you know, we bring it up beginning of the year, like, do we know where our curriculum maps are? Within that curriculum map, if it's earth science, it will be listed all the standards for grade three for earth science. And then next to it will be all of our resources that are listed. You know, we have programs like Mystery Science, and we have programs like Generation Genius, which are both science programs. All that content is linked into it, so teachers can click on it. But it's not a physical book that we're presenting to students. And there is great conversation about whether teachers do want it or don't want it. So we're in that beginning phase where I will, I'll get into the sciences that we are looking at. But there is different programs, there are books, there are no books, there's online portals. So it's figuring out what we need and how we can continue to grow it. One of the great things that we were able to do, working with Jonathan Shapiro, is we were able to have Lynn Fitzgerald from the middle school come in. And she was able to, on our elementary professional development, we invited her in. And she worked with our grade three, four, five, and sixth grade teachers. So at the elementary level, we could see where it goes. And I thought that that vertical vision was really important for our elementary teachers to see, here is what we're doing, but here is where it's transforming and where it's transitioning to. We need to be mindful of that, and I can't have you be mindful of that in June. So it was so great to have that collaboration with Jonathan and to be able, so grateful for Lynn for volunteering herself. Sacrifice for tribute. But it was great to have her in, just great knowledge. So as we begin this work with science, having that background at the elementary level is huge.
And the assessments are changing dramatically. So the assessments in science are now more problem-based, task-oriented. You're manipulating figures on a screen. It's a very different type of assessment.
It was very eye-opening.
Yeah.
So really, our materials are now correlating more to the direction of the assessment.
And to, just to be fully transparent, some of those materials are handouts. So we don't have a book, per se, but there's definitely paper and pencil opportunity for students so that they can work through things.
Thank you.
Sure. Feel free to stop at any time. I think this is what I'm most excited about, cause I am a numbers person. And I knew the program existed in sixth grade. And I met with a teacher over the summer to kind of work with me and, let me figure out this program. And I fell in love with it. I thought it could be transformational. So I, we have access to it starting in grade three. So I took our math district benchmarks and put them onto this online platform called Pair Assessment. For the main reason is it's fast, it's efficient, it's giving students great practice on a different platform. But also the data we can get, which I'll show you in a minute, is a game changer. And it can drive instruction, change instruction, and really focus on student growth, and that's where I'm trying to go. I'm able to share this. I just met with the Title I staff over at Bryanville. But being able to share this information with support staff as well and show them how to target based on an assessment has been, is proving to be very valuable. We are in the process of just finishing Benchmark One. So I was able to go into grades three through six. Teachers were comfortable with it, students took it. We're just finishing, finishing up, so I almost have all that data. Here's what that data looks like. As a teacher is giving this assessment, they have an online platform that looks like this instant, and it updates instantly, kind of like an MCAS portal. And what it does is it shows you the strengths and weaknesses of each question. So every bar is a different question. So I can instantly see, oh my gosh, what is wrong with question, I can't read that far. I'm gonna call it question twenty, the last one on the end. But what is wrong with that question? Why are so many students struggling on that? What I was able to do is link each question to a standard. So now when we're looking at an assessment, I have easy access. I know what type of question that is. And more importantly, I also know that that's something I have to go back and reteach my class. And more importantly, it will then show you, wow, everyone that got it wrong picked B. What is about B that's the attractive distractor? Using this language with students, getting them to understand it. The other reason why I love it, not only is it, you know, does it take all of your questions and spit out a report? I can spit out a report per student, which is what I did for those Title I teachers, was able to just print out the reports for their student. We can batch it. We can also look at it as a district. So I blurred out the teacher's name. It says Teacher A. But then I'm also able to show a teacher, hey, so let's, let's take a look. What do you think about your numbers? Our area of weakness was number-based ten operations. Let's take a look at that. Or if there's a standard that they're outperforming, what is it that you're doing? What does that look like? Can I come in and see it so I can understand it and then be able to share it? What I was able to do then, and this is the work that's happening at Common Planning, it's just about to happen, cause we just finished, we're just about to finish this benchmark. So I'm like, I can't wait. But this work is gonna happen at Common Planning, but it's also gonna happen at my PLC, which I'll talk about. But I'm also hoping it'll be at Professional Development. Now that we have this data, so what? Like, why is this great? Well, because now I can show you a tool that's going to show you how to target this instruction. This program does. So if N standard, N numbers-based ten operations, A two, I can plug that right into the program, and it will give me just questions based on that. Can we use that in tight and time? Can we use that as our support team? Can we use this in morning work? Can we take the areas that we have weaknesses in and use that? And then the program actually has what's called a redirect button. When we're testing students, why is it just a one-time test? Why isn't it practice a benchmark? Let's practice it. Great. We're stuck on this standard. It's our lowest performing standard. We're gonna practice it. And I can redirect them with a click of a button. I can redirect the entire class or just students, and I can redirect them only on what they got wrong or skipped.
As they're in the software?
When they finish it, I can redirect certain students. And the great part is, is I can redirect them with what they missed and what they skipped. That's another cool thing that I was able to see, is the amount of students that get things wrong cause they didn't follow the direction. What an eye-opening sign. We don't see that on MCAS, that, you know, they partially answer this.
Can you correlate some of this, or when you get more data, obviously? But as we're going through this, I'm wondering how to correlate this with our achievement results, with the MCAS results, with rates?
I think it'll be spot-on.
Bring it all together, right?
I think it'll be spot-on. And you can do it at, so we could do it at the district level, but we could also do it at a more finite level, grade level, teacher level. And that, I think, depends on building administration and what, where they wanna take that conversation.
Well, we're getting back to teaching to the student, right? Which was, I don't know, fifteen years ago or so, was sort of the thing that we really focused on, teaching the individual student. And this is getting, in my view anyway, back to that.
And the tools that we have now, right, it's taking that time conception out of it. I don't have to collect the data. The data is instant. So now let's take that data, let's find out, I can show you other tools that can target it. So then you can just spend your time on developing hands-on materials, concrete manipulatives. How do we bring this to life for our learners? So?
So you just gave us a lot of questions. I see first one, and you're jumping. Go ahead.
I have a couple. So first of all, privacy. Who can see this? Does this stay where?
So I have access to all of it, and then I share it with building principals. The teachers have access to their own class. It's their classroom, so they can see just their classroom.
So it, and they say, so this isn't being shared, like, to the developer, to the, like?
No.
Oh.
Okay, and so like in all students, is this ever shared with the parents?
So this is our, so this is our first year using it. That is one of the conversations that I'd like to bring back to all grades, to grades three through six and administrators at that level, cause I think it is an important question. We should be proud of the work, we should be proud of this work. I think it shows fantastic information.
And then can you tell when a kid is just like going as fast as he can?
Yeah, so do you see these little, how cool is this? Do you see those, do you see the line that goes underneath it? That tells you how long a student spent on a question. And when you print out the student report, it'll say like, four seconds. Hey, Johnny, why are you spending four seconds on a question? Couldn't even write that number down that fast. So yes, it does. So, and the great part is, is when I was in classrooms, like if there was a teacher who's like, I'm not comfortable doing it myself. Can you, can you just come in and be there? Watching their face as this updates lives, it was like, it was really cool to see. And it, like, you could tell that their wheels were turning. It's so new that I would love them to be able to look at this and dive more into it at Professional Development cause I think it is an area of growth. And I'm gonna just skip ahead. We had, so again, this was just kind of a, I'm gonna drop a seed. And we already have teachers who have transformed their entire curriculum already onto Pair Assessment for math. All of their math topics are on here, cause they want the data, and they wanna know what to do with it and how to change their instruction. It's really cool.
Do they have anything like this for writing?
Yes, so they have something similar called No Red Ink, and our sixth grade uses it.
Actually, sixth grade topic.
Yep.
Cause I could see this being so useful.
And iReady actually just, so our iReady program, I have a training with them tomorrow. They just released their literacy tasks. I will find out more about that tomorrow. But it is, it is the writing portion. I'm not sure if it can do all of this, but for our sixth graders, they do have No Red Ink that will help analyze their writing and give targeted feedback.
This also program was previously called Edge Elastic, and it was purchased by Pair Assessment. This is a program that my chef brought to the district many years ago. And it's, the teachers in grades seven through ten used pretty exhaustively. And the program has just gotten better and better over the years and expanded to different disciplines. And to, what it now does is so far removed from where it was, but it's the same, it's the same tool that we've been using.
Okay.
In the upper grades for a while.
And so, and even just talking with students, like going into classroom, hey, what'd you think? Like, thanks for being my guinea pigs. I really appreciate you trying this out. What'd you think? And they're like, not a big deal. Even our third graders, they were very comfortable. Our teachers were very comfortable. We just kinda jumped right in, and I'm grateful for that. So just to showcase what the next step for teachers will be. I'm gonna be able to show them how to take their lowest performing standard, put it into Magic School, and create documents like this instantly. So we know that place value is a number ten times more, ten times less, one tenth up. That was our weakest standard. Instantly being able to have more practice on this skill. This took five seconds. I copied it from the standard in the assessment. I put it into this program, and it spit it out for me. This is where I wanna take teachers, cause this is where we can transform and target individual learners. Am I not loud enough? Wow. So that's the work that I, that'll be the next level, the next piece. So again, a lot of, a lot of my day, when we have meetings, are spent meeting with grade levels at what we call our common planning meetings. And this is that time where I'm working with administrators, and we kind of have a twenty-five, twenty-five split. So I'll create an agenda insert with them, they'll create an agenda insert with me. And we'll be able to be like, this is what I wanna accomplish, student-wise, teacher-wise, nitty, you know, just nuts and bolts of what a principal and assistant principal may need to do. And then I get to do the same on my end for curriculum, or things that I wanna share, or data that I wanna review. And things like different tools that could drive instruction, that would be the place that I could also do it as well. This is one of the things, also just talking about curriculum and what I'm able to share with teachers. We have programs such as, so we have iReady, that's a district-funded program. We have Generation Genius, that's a district-funded program. And then we have our math curriculum and visions. I was able to take all three and come up with a living document that integrates all three of them. So if we have a new teacher that walks in, here's our math program, here's this document, everything that you need just goes in order. Here is everything in one. Here is some math videos you can watch. Here is our intervention program, and then here is our curriculum and where it lines up with our Envisions program. So this is the kind of stuff that I'm sharing at Common Planning with staff across the three buildings. So it's nice to have that continuity across the three buildings.
That's awesome. Quick question on that. With the standards, is there any way to also, at some point, figure out what the prerequisite skills are for that standard? So that we need to teach like up or down the vertical alignment of the standards? You could do that.
That would come in our iReady, yeah, that would come in our iReady program. We could correlate it to that. But that is a great question.
There's a piece of Envision too for that, where you can move back and forth and assign students based on where their progress is or where they're performing.
This is also something that I'm grateful to have the opportunity to do, like Mary Beth was saying, finishing up my work with observations, getting to just see what's going on and be able to share it. So these are, you know, going through walkthroughs and being able to be like, oh my gosh, I saw this, oh my gosh, I saw this. Or if there's a teacher that's like, I just can't get my kids to buy into their minutes. Oh my gosh, I saw the coolest thing in a grade one classroom. Look what she did for iReady for November. Unbelievable iReady scores. Being able to take pictures and share it. This, what the bottom right-hand corner was, a second grade classroom. I had walked in and I was blown away at how on task second graders were. And I'm like, where were you when I was in third grade? I should've came here last year, cause this is magic. And I looked at her board, and it was genius. So these are things that I feel so lucky to be able to see and just share out. And I think it's so important. It's like hospital rounds. And, you know, being able to share it across the three buildings is, is just shining light. And, and many times, I'm like, man, I wanna redo, like. So our PLC groups meet about once a month, and we had four different, so all that elementary schools picked the same four personal learning community groups. And one of the ones that I thought was really important was a reflective practice. Being able to share what's happening, what are we doing, questions that we have, and also drop seeds that might spark change. So that was one of them. The other one is science. So my reflective practice, that's where Pair Assessment came up. I was able to be like, oh, look at this program. Our benchmark's on here. Take a look. And during that time, like I said, I had staff that are already transforming, not just math, but they've put science into here, they've put social studies into here, they've put reading. They figured out that it imports Google Docs. So if you have a test that's made that you used last year in Google Docs, Pair Assessment will read it. If you have Google Forms, it will read it. So they're learning all these things, and it's just like, ready, you just drop a seed. Like, that's all I feel like I have to do. Drop a seed, and they're gonna run with it. So that's one. And then the other one was Magic School, where they're able to take this data and make it real for their classroom, come up with product that they can use to, to really focus on that. The other thing that is really important to me is just kind of giving food for thought. How are we thinking about? How are we thinking about number cents? Are we doing anything to grow number cents? It's not a really big part of Envisions, but it's something that's lacking. So how can we figure out different creative ways? What are we doing? The emails I get, Melinda, did you find this? Melinda, did you see this? Or I went into this site and I found this. I compile it all and I share it out with my group. And that's kind of how we start that first session. It's been great and I love that I get emails, like I just tried this, found this, what do you think? The whole, the middle one is very important to me. That's something that started with Math Academy through our SRF funds when we had that past couple of years. And so a few teachers are using this. And through our PLC group, the reflective practice group, I'm able to kind of spread it a little bit more. Can we think of problem solving differently? We keep using keywords. More doesn't always mean add. It just doesn't. And so really, can we transform our way of thinking? What if we use this approach? What if we use operational situations? And what if we use the, just do I have a total? Do I need a total? In visualizing it for students. And it's funny, I'm seeing this more and more classrooms now and they have posters of it and they're using that language and it's great to see. The one on the right is an estimation routine. I had two first grade teachers email me and say, my kids ask for it every day now. I have to start every day with this. And that's just building number cents. That's what we want and it will spread. So it was really important for me to reflect as I'm asking my staff to reflect. And so some of the things they pointed out was, Melinda, I loved my favorite note. My favorite note is that math activity is being done in second grade. Awesome. Number talks. A teacher had never done number talks, it was one of her goals. She's like, I know it's important, I have to find time for it, I'm gonna make time for it this year. She emailed me, it's going awesome, I love it and it's so easy. You know, using Magic School. I had a fifth grade teacher take all of the data from M-PAS from her students from last year. So she took the fourth grade M-PAS because they're now in fifth grade. And she was able to take their lowest standards, use Magic School and create her morning work based on their needs from last year during that time. So it's, it's a great time to have with staff and be able to reflect. The other group is science. And again, I know this is a work in progress along with writing. But our next three sessions of our PLC groups for science, they're gonna be meeting with No Atom Stem Scopes in Foss. And I've arranged at their PLC time that they're gonna have an online Zoom call with these different programs. And they're gonna walk teachers who selected to be part of this personal learning community. They'll get a chance to go through it with them and then they'll get an online account and get a chance to explore. And the idea is they can report back to the larger staff at a faculty meeting or staff meeting or things like that. So all of the programs, whether it's writing or science, this is par assessment, iReady, no red ink, our writing program and grammar program. These are things I'll continue to work at during our professional development. With the idea that, you know, we just want to continue to reflect and grow and improve. That's, that's our main goal and how do we meet the needs of all of our learners while supporting teachers along the way? Any questions? That was a lot, I apologize.
Actually.
You just like sent her excitement.
I was just gonna say.
Every single day. I take this every day.
I was literally gonna say that the enthusiasm for this is like, it makes it, you know, we're all like kind of on the address.
Right person for the right job.
I, I have to say, I, that's awesome. And I also feel like this is a missing link, right? Like this is tying the three elementaries together, it's tying all the teachers together, getting everybody on the same page. And I feel like it's a missing link that we've needed for a long time. And it's not just the programs, which by the way are amazing, but it's the enthusiasm and, you know, somebody there to tie it all together, which I think is awesome.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Yeah, definitely. I think also showcasing teachers with what great work teachers are doing because they can't be in every classroom, right? And see what somebody at Bryanfield is, is doing. But you're able to bring it to them and then at some point they also can be showcased. So I think that also builds enthusiasm from the teacher's side, I would imagine.
And that was a double-edged sword, right? We used to have, we used to have our professional development days district-wide. And it just, it was so hard because you wanted it to work, but there are so many teachers that it's really not the most productive all times. So it's like, that was so important for us teachers because that was the one time we got to share. So if we restructure our professional development, maybe we can still have the best of both worlds and kind of be able to share that just in a different way.
Yeah, do you see that as a need? It sounds like potentially.
Seeing.
Like district-wide, having more district-wide PDs.
Both. I think we need district-wide PD, but I also think the smaller PD where we're grade-level-based, school-based, I think they're more efficient and productive. So I think it's a good balance. We were all together once and then we were not all together once and I, I think having a balance is important.
It's a challenge with the dismissal times.
I can imagine, yeah, yeah, yeah. Another question I had was, I know you talked about researching and showcasing science programs. And is that for potential new programs that might be added or?
The beginning work of that was what do we have?
Okay, what do we have?
What do we have? And so that was work, that was the work where PLC started. And we have lots of great stuff. And these curriculum maps that teachers have spent countless years on developing and continuing to work on and improve and now working with Jonathan, like it's fantastic work. We have a great plan. Do we need a book? I don't know if we need a book. We just need to make sure that we're able to support teachers and our students for where they need to be. And then also just keeping in mind the data, right? Our science scores could be improved. So is, could this, could this potentially fit our needs? I don't know, that's, that's what the goal is. Do I think it's gonna be a year solve? No.
Got it, so the beginning of the process.
Yeah.
Got it, thank you.
And finding, kind of going to Sue's, the times all together, like things that are, you're finding that are working are eager, I'm hoping able to share with the other content supervisors to see if what you're doing can hopefully.
Yeah, and that's, that's how kind of Jonathan and I were able to get Lynn in to, you know, we were talking science at the middle school level, then at high school level, and I'm like, well, what do, we need that. I want her.
Yeah, to like see the results.
I love that. I love that you connected the middle school to, yeah, it's awesome.
And, and the same thing happens with writing. I get to work with Dr. Galligan and again, we're constantly having conversation about what does it look like in middle school? This no red ink program came down to sixth grade with all of his work and research and so it, there's constant communication, which is important.
Thank you.
Quick question. What, what have been some of the major themes you've seen in terms of the positives that you've heard from teachers about just having this position and also, I guess, having the time and space? Obviously you haven't had a ton of time to do the PLC, so it's still new.
I think it's just the opportunity to share, like, you know, showcasing different things and then being able to revisit them at Common Planning. That Common Planning time for me has been transformational. Being able to be with every grade level minus, minus pre-K. Can't get there all the time. But K through six, truly being consistent at every grade level for the entire time across the three buildings and then being able, if there's, right, because if a grade level is asking a question, I can take that to the other, like I can do that right away. And I think that immediate feedback and that immediate problem solving and communication is huge. And I also think, like you had said, it bridges the schools and gives a sense of continuity. And I think that that's really important for our elementary schools. They want that and they need that and it is important.
And I think too, like moving into budget season, it's like this will show like return on investment.
I agree, I totally agree with that.
We are going as a, as a team here to show that what we're putting in is, you know, with data. Like I think we're gonna, that's gonna be critical in the next handful of years.
And I think it'll show, especially with the reteaching, right? Like that cuts the time on when you grade an assessment to when you can reteach, you can do it in the same class versus, you know, at the end of the week after you've done, you know, all the other things you might need to do as a teacher.
Which is great for the teacher, but think about how powerful that is for the student to right away be having that conversation about why they made the choice that they made while it's fresh in their minds. So it's actually relevant.
And one thing that I would never do right now, but I think it's a, I think it's a conversation for fifth and sixth grade for sure, is there is a button that can immediately release the scores to the students. I wouldn't do it yet, but as a fifth grader, do you need to understand that when you hit submit, it's real? Yes. But, but again, it, it brings a different sense of ownership. And teaching fifth grade for so long, I, I would be very comfortable with doing this with fifth and sixth graders. And I do think it's something that by the end of the year, could third graders be responsible enough and reflective enough to be like, I need to give my best work because when I hit submit, it means submit?
Totally.
I think that's important. And if not, there's always a redirect button. We can get back to you. But that's another food for thought for future growth.
Yeah.
Any final questions?
I'm just super excited about this. Yeah, I think it, you know, brings a lot of opportunities for students, but also teachers. Sounds like it's going great, so thank you.
Great job, really good job.
Thank you.
Melinda, you don't have to hang out. Melinda gets here really early.
I appreciate the time and thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under my report, as we said during the adjustment part, there's a couple of middle, middle-level waivers and a overall waiver. So you'll see there's a difference in wording. I'm gonna start with cheerleading. So cheerleading is not an MIA sanctioned sport, so we're not asking for an MIA middle-level waiver for winter cheerleading. We're just asking for a waiver to allow eighth-grade students to participate in cheerleading. Right now, we just have eight girls registered. So opening up to eighth graders could get the squad up to twelve to fourteen, which is a better number for that. So that isn't something we file anywhere, it's just us coming to you all for approval to do that.
I was just gonna ask you, do you want to do them independently or what? All right. So can I get a motion to approve the waiver for winter cheerleading as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by David, seconded by Katrina, starting for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous.
The next one is gymnastics. So we have been co-op-ing gymnastics with Silver Lake for several years. Here, we've had a waiver in and out over time depending upon the registration numbers. Right now, we have six girls on the Pembroke side registered and only three girls on the Silver Lake side registered. So we asked for a middle-level waiver to allow eighth graders to participate as well. As you all know, gymnastics is more of an individual sport, so there's no concerns around size or anything like that, so.
So can I get a motion to approve the MIAA middle-level waiver for gymnastics as presented?
Second.
Motion by Sue, seconded by David. Is there any discussion? I do have a question.
Sure.
Where gymnastics, we're now allowing some younger kids in with some older kids. Bodies are a little different, strength components are a little different. Is there any issue or concern there?
No, so we are, our gymnastics program runs with a coach and an assistant coach, so they're kind of able to split the girls in a, in a manner that makes sense as far as coaching.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous, Natalie.
The last one is for girls' basketball. So we are requesting a middle-level waiver to allow eighth graders to join the JV team. We've had a waiver for the past couple of years. This year, we were hoping that we would not need to request the waiver. I want to talk a little bit about the numbers. So there are currently twenty girls registered for the program. That is enough students to have a JV and a varsity team. Brian is asking that we file for the waiver just in case at some point we need to add students. There's, obviously today is the second day of trial, so we're not super sure that all twenty are sticking with it. Or I don't even know if all twenty showed up yesterday. I didn't have a chance to touch with Brian, but we want to have the waiver on file if we need to access it. At this point, we're not looking to add eighth-grade girls to the roster with twenty high school girls, but if the number drops to fifteen or sixteen, then we're gonna need to add a few girls.
This is for the two levels.
You can only add to the JV.
I know, but.
Twenty students total.
For, for varsity and JV.
And you don't have to use the waiver? You could if you, as long as it's.
It has to be filed.
Okay, got it.
So can I get a motion to approve the MIAA middle-level waiver for girls' basketball as presented?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Katrina, seconded by Sue. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous, Natalie.
Under the Subcommittee and Liaison Updates, I just want to give two updates before we get to the policy sub-stuff. So as Patrick mentioned, Budget Sub is meeting next Tuesday at six-thirty. Education Subcommittee will be meeting the following week, Monday, December ninth at ten, and then Tuesday, the seventeenth at one. Those meeting agendas will be posted and pushed out, but I just wanted to put that on folks' radar. I also received a question about our student rep. You'll notice there is not a student rep sitting at the table yet. They are going, well, they're, I think it might have been our September meeting where you all discussed, the three of you kind of rotating through that group. They're excited to welcome you to their December nineteenth meeting.
Okay.
They are having a bit of a challenge selecting one rep to sit at the table with you all, so.
And so there's more than one rep that wants to sit at the table?
They all want to sit here. So I do think meeting with a school committee liaison on the nineteenth will kind of ease the fact that they're all still have a say, even though only one of them is sitting here, so.
So they won't sit here at all at this table?
One, one, they're supposed to elect one member to, to come to our meetings and then you all are gonna meet with them in the form of some of these.
And the small group has to elect the one?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, that's tough.
Mark met with them yesterday and they're still deadlocked, so.
So is it, is it like a tie or something?
So there's five students on the advisory committee with one alternate. There's a number of students, five, that would like to be.
Is it possible to rotate it though to get them the experience or it wouldn't?
It has, the statute says it has to be the same. Oh, yeah.
This is a great life lesson for them now.
I think everyone got one vote.
I think everyone got one vote.
Did everybody vote for themselves or?
I think so. They're still working through that.
On what grade levels are they?
It is all the way nine through twelve. You've got a little bit of everything in there.
It's a good problem to have.
I was just gonna say, in years past, we did not have those little students.
The longer their deadlock, the less like time they can be here. Like they need to figure this out.
Correct.
Much.
You're gonna help them see that, their way on the nineteenth.
I'm not this month.
We're gonna flip a coin. Just kidding. You can tell me what you want to do, Stu. Counsel. So in your packet, you have all of the policy Subcommittee work for a second read. So the new policies that we were moving forward to create Policy Section A in our current policy manual, as well as the addition back of JIE pregnant students and then the rescinding of Policy JICKR because it is a duplicate of another one that's in here now. So I'm not sure if folks have specific questions. I think we talked a little bit about it when it came as a first read a few weeks back, so.
Do you guys have questions?
I don't have any questions.
I have one, and I think it's a redundant question, so I'm gonna ask for a little forgiveness. But when I go through this, and I circled it multiple times, right? Interestingly enough, in the, let me find it, sorry. In the ECA non-discrimination on the basis of sex, we reference the Title IX of the Education Amendments in 1972. And then we go on and we talk about gender identity, sex stereotypes, sex characteristics. I clearly know what gender identity is, and I think I asked this before, so, and I might just be old. What is a sex stereotype?
Boys do this and girls do that.
Girls wear pink, boys wear blue.
I'm sorry, and we can't, that's discrimination?
Well, I think if I say, if somebody said to you, like, you can't wear pink because that's what girls wear.
Right, okay, but.
I think, if I'm understanding it, that's.
Or, if I can give an example, just like sections of a classroom, like, boys have to go to the blue seats, girls have to go to the pink seats, or something like that. So it's making sure that we give choice and not saying, like, all boys have to do this, all girls have to do that.
I think it's getting silly. Quite honestly, I, I think it's getting silly, and that's why I, specifically why I asked that question, right? It's, and, and I don't wanna turn this into some big thing, but this was supposed to protect kids to all have a safe and reasonable learning environment. And maybe that was just a bad example, but I, I just, there's a point that I think we're getting a little silly. I really do. And then, and, and I guess my question is, we moved a lot of this because of the new Title IX language, and if that Title IX language gets reversed, I think some of this still has to be here because of the Massachusetts law, is that right?
Right, so all of it is still part of the Massachusetts law.
Wanna be clear about that.
The only policy that references the Title IX final rule is JIE pregnant students, and it references the section of final rule that talks about having a lactation space available for pregnant students when they return to education. So that is the only reference to the Title IX.
Yeah.
I guess, here's what I would say, and I do have faith in our administrative team on this, because there's also discretion in understanding when you read through it about how we put these things forward and how we investigate this in, in a bit of reasonableness. But the goal needs to be to protect kids and let all kids have a safe and reasonable environment in which to learn, which is really caution us to not, the pendulum can't swing so far that it becomes almost punitive for some kids and okay for an incredible minority of kids. It needs to be okay for all kids, right? And, and my, my worry, it's exactly what you just said, right? Whether it's a teacher or another kid that says, why are you sitting in a pink chair? Why are you sitting in a blue chair? Why, how, why are you sitting in a yellow chair, right? Sometimes kids are just kids, right? And it's not discrimination, it is not harassment, it's just kids being, especially little kids, right? That's actually where I worry about this. It's much less at the high school level and much more so at the elementary level. We gotta allow children the innocence of being children a little bit. And, and I just worry exactly what we just said about that overextending.
A hundred percent, but unfortunately, we're in Massachusetts and it's the law. But I agree with you a hundred percent.
So that sex stereotypes is the Massachusetts law. I know we're making some amendments and changes, but that has, most of this has been a place for Massachusetts.
It's not in other states, it's Massachusetts.
I get it, but, and I only mention it, because I do believe here in Pembroke, we have very rational, I, I trust your Jess is, is sort of the coordinator that's investigating this, to, to be reasonable with how it is. I just, I, I do think, I, I worry about this stuff with, with little kids, right? I'm not talking about 17, nobody's worried about pink and blue chairs at 17 and 18-year-old kids, or at least I don't think. It's much more severe issues at that stage and that age, but.
The process that we have now, and Mary Beth is, most of the time, our decision-maker on kinda cases that we have, complaints for Title IX, there is quite, as you can see and hear through the grievance procedures, a lengthy process. So it isn't just hearing a student making a statement and, oh, you know, you violated Title IX. It's a large, and it's based on like preponderance of evidence and the impact it has on students creating such a, an environment that making them uncomfortable in a hostile kinda environment. So one statement kind of alone, as you read this, yes, that might be alarming to read to say, to think about it at, like, a, you know, a five-year-old's making a statement could they be accused of sexual harassment? But there is quite a lengthy process for us to.
And I, you know, I know as teachers, you all have an understanding of what's developmentally appropriate, so I think that that's a piece that if we wanted to, we could add and edit in there to talk about what is developmentally appropriate based on age or based on, you know, we have to be careful there.
I think that's all, that comes out through the, the process itself.
I don't wanna add anything. I think the bare minimum is what we should add. I don't wanna add anything extra. I think that will happen anyways, right? But I think the piece with the colors, right? Like, there's something you could easily do. A teacher could just be like, I'm gonna count you off one, two, right? And then just make a group, or be like, all yellow shirts, go over there, right? So I think there's different ways that you can do the same thing without having to be like, boys or girls, or if you're short or tall, right? Like, pick a different thing.
You have to come up to the mic so that folks at home can hear you. It amplifies for pack, for local scene.
I apologize, I didn't look at this beforehand, but.
Would you, I know.
My name is Jane Cornan, I'm in Pembroke on Water Street. Are you saying that, that children cannot be divided, boys and girls, at all anymore? Is that discrimination?
Nobody's saying that at all.
No.
That's also not my decision.
No, I'm just wondering, is that what the, like, can you go through what the?
That's not what it's saying at all, no.
And then, I, I just wonder, are there protections, you said, you know, for, for all children? Are there protections for children that are brought up in a, say, a religious home that, you know, feel differently than, than other people?
So there is, so, we're just, we're talking specifically about some of the additional language with Title IX and the non-discrimination, and I did see religion is a listed, is a listed protected.
But, but what I'm saying is sometimes religion and gender ideology are very different takes on the same thing. So if one person's religion and upbringing doesn't go along with what's, you know, what everybody else in the classroom is okay with, what happens?
I think the best way to, for me to put it, Jane, is it's about just respecting the individuals within the classroom regardless of whether it's a faith-based individual, someone who is struggling with their gender identity, with their sexuality, with their name, I, I mean, so many of that, their military status, Amerito status, their familial status. It's, it's simply about making, the, the goal is about making sure that everybody gets that same level of decency and respect in the learning environment. The, the reason that I asked the question is, A, some of these things, I don't even understand what they're saying. And then I worry about overextending some of these things in one direction versus another, which is why I brought that up. But all those things that you talked about are, are protected under both the policy and the Title IX legislation.
Students are able to access a public education in Pembroke.
Regardless of religion.
All students.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what this is saying.
No, I, I know. I'm just saying, in, in a situation where somebody is, is now claiming harassment or discrimination, and somebody else on the other side is saying, well, this is, you know, this is my religion, this is how I feel, like, those are two that are supposed to be protected at the same time in a, in a very.
And I think that's why this lists the procedures of, if there's a complaint, how they're handled. That's, that's what these policies give that protection of.
Okay.
What the policy, the procedures.
And I think there's a fine line between harassment versus a conversation that's happening in a classroom where there's viewpoints or conversations about differences of opinion versus a harassment and discrimination.
Right.
And infringing on civil rights.
Right.
Your harassment and discrimination claim has to be proved that you are actually being denied access to the curriculum or to instruct, it's a very high bar. It's not a one-off comment or, or a learning opportunity where kids with differences learn to say, okay, we can agree to disagree. We're gonna, you know, we can both have our own ideas. This is different, this goes deeper in terms of the behavior is so egregious that somebody's being denied their access to education.
Yeah. Okay.
The bar's higher.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And just to point out, and that's a good question, you know, it lists several protected class, classes, and religion is one that is part of that same list, so that could be something. These are all protected classes, so.
So what I'd like to do is take these one by one, just because there's so many of them. And by the way, I wanna thank Policy Sub, you guys did a tremendous amount of work. There was a lot of discussion in a couple of meetings about these and, and about this type of thing. So I appreciate the amount of time that you guys spent to go through this and make sure that there is alignment. I know that you have legal information and legal opinions going through it also. So can I get a motion to approve Policy EC non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation as presented?
So moved.
Motion by David, seconded, so seconded by Allison. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous, Natalie. Can I get a motion to accept for approval, Policy EC dash R, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Katrina, seconded by Allison. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous. Can I get a motion to accept and approve Policy ECA, non-discrimination on the basis of sex as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Allison, seconded by Katrina. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous, Natalie. Can I get a motion to accept and approve Policy ACAB, sexual and sex-based harassment and retaliation as presented?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion by Allison, seconded by David. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous, Natalie. May I have a motion to accept and approve Policy ACGA, civil rights grievance procedure as accepted?
So moved.
Motion by Sue, seconded by Katrina. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Can I get a motion to accept and approve Policy ACGB, Title IX sexual discrimination grievance procedure as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by David, seconded by Allison. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? This and one power was also unanimous, Natalie. Could I get a motion to accept and approve Policy JIE, pregnant students as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Katrina, seconded by Allison. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous, Natalie. Can I get a motion to accept and approve the rescinding of Policy JICK dash R, student-to-student harassment regulations?
So moved. Second.
Motion by David, seconded by Allison. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous, Natalie. That was a lot, thank you guys. Our next meeting is?
December 17th. We're gonna do Maintenance of Effort, Budget, and some other exciting things. I'm not sure what yet, but they're gonna be great.
I hope to have the, I took a second, maybe draft of the goals. I'll email you about that.
I don't think it will be by December 17th because we're waiting for some DASI guidance, but I am going to add to the agenda a topic for this committee to have a conversation. As you all know, Question Two in, in November was passed. However, there is local authority, we can still keep the M-PAS requirement as part of the Pembroke requirement for a Pembroke diploma, and I'd like this committee to have that discussion.
Sure, we talked about EdSub tackling that subject first. We're expecting guidance from DESI on December 5th, so hopefully by the time EdSub meets on the 17th, we'll have their guidance.
I think we're meeting next Monday.
Yeah, they are meeting next Monday, but it's for Program of Studies.
Okay.
Yep.
We're waiting for the guidance to come from DESI on how they wanna do it, but at some point, I do think that that's our, and then, I know Policy Sub was talking about the random policy that I had asked about.
The DICE. And they, Policy Sub did not move an edit forward. We talked about amending some of the language in Athletic Handbook, which would come through to the full committee as well.
And he, yeah, I think Brian was looking to some of the other, like, how other talents were to.
Comparable districts, yeah.
Put it in Athletic Handbook.
So.
Not a standalone policy, it would, that's, we talked about it, and it would make more sense to put it, the practice in our policy, in the, I'm sorry, in the Athletic Handbook.
Can we put it back on the agenda to discuss the next meeting?
Yeah, I, I think, I think we can. I, I mean, I think, so what, what you're bringing forward then, only because I made the request, so that's why I'm asking about it. So if Policy Sub is gonna come back and with, we, we're recommending no change, totally fine, right?
Well, put it in, put it.
But instead.
The Athletic.
No, that's my point, right? So what I'd like to do is at least have that discussion about kind of what you guys talked about, what the reasoning was, makes a lot of sense, but it, and it might actually make total sense, put it in the Athletic Handbook.
I think we were waiting for Brian to come, yeah, to come back from the Athletic.
And I'm okay with that too, like, once you guys are ready though, I think just.
I think we were waiting to see what his proposed language.
That's totally fine, yeah. When you're ready, when you guys are ready for that, to come back and have that discussion, I think that would be good. Are there other topics? I know we have, we're gonna have a lot of budget topics coming up, but is there any other?
Long-term planning meeting about my favorite playground.
About playgrounds? Yeah.
It has not met yet, but it could possibly meet before December 17th and we could share back with you.
I would, I'd love to hear how.
Yeah, I think, or maybe even very early January.